Okay, I call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Hopkinton Select Board is being held both in person and remotely using the video conference platform Zoom. All Select Board members attending tonight are present in room 215-216 of the Town Hall. The public has the option of attending in person here at Town Hall or via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. This meeting is being recorded. Before we get going, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, welcome. We're going to begin with the public forum. Each person will have up to two minutes to speak at public forum. Please state by stating your name and address, recognizing there may be people at the meeting room here in person and participating remotely who would like to speak. We'll go to the room first. Is there anyone present in the meeting room who would like to speak at the public forum? Nope. Ben, anyone on Zoom? Cool. I have one quick thing that I want to say for public forum. Our Select Board member, Amy Britterbush, is recovering well from her surgery and she's expected to be back towards the end of the month. Consent agenda. The Board will consider approving the consent agenda consisting of the approval of the minutes of September 21 and September 22, 2021 meetings, the accepting a gift to the police department from the families of Legacy Farms North, and accepting a $500 gift to the fire department from the families of Legacy Farms North. Would any Board members like to break one out for a separate vote?
Mr. Chair, through you, I would break out B and C, please.
Okay. In Butch's case, I move to request a motion to approve the consent agenda absent items of B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion been seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say something. This is just the minutes and what a great job you do with the minutes. I mean, sometimes it's seven more pages and they're very accurate and they're very good and I'm very impressed. So, thank you very much, Elaine.
Thank you.
Let the minute show that, please.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stayed? None. Mr. Tedstone.
So, for B and C, I kind of pride myself on being the member of the Select Board that really works closely with the police and fire historically, and I would like to thank the members of Legacy Farms North for their generous donations to the police and the fire department.
I would concur in your thanking of the gifts. I think it's a fabulous generous donation.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept consent agenda items B and C as written.
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, that passes. Next item is the Marathon Committee, Boston Marathon update. Select Board will receive an update from the Chair of the Marathon Committee on the 125th Boston Marathon. We also want to celebrate the tireless work of this committee and the excellent leadership of Dottie Ferretta Wallace, we like to call her Dottie. This committee does so much for the community and the running world by helping facilitate this world-class premier event. No words can capture the countless hours your team puts in before the event, during, and after the event. Suffice to say, the Marathon Committee has been putting up great work, warm welcoming show to start the race for over 42 years.
Mr. Chair, I would like to table this until at least 5:45 Agenda time when Dorothy Wallace gets here.
That sounds about right to me.
To the Board.
Can we move on to...
Deputy Chief?
Deputy Chief, or is that something that has to be at 5:55 or smaller? No.
No.
Isn't here already?
Chief Bennett, are you expecting more people? Should we hold off till 5:55 or do you think that now is an acceptable time to do it?
Would the Chair like to go now?
Sure. I'm not the Chair.
I'm not. I'm still the Chair, but I'm not the Chair.
All right. So, we're going to hold off on that. To answer your question, we're waiting for Dottie's show.
No, I wondered about for this one. We were waiting for somebody, but you asked that question.
I don't see John Morris.
All right. So, the Board will interview John Porter for the deputy police chief's position and consider appointing him Hopkinton's next deputy police chief per the police chief's recommendation. Following an internal process that included the police chief, human resources, and the town manager's office. Welcome.
It's nice to be here.
How are you doing?
Thank you.
So, Chief, why don't you tell us, or Maria, tell us a little bit about the interview process of how you got us to here now, and then we'll take it from there.
Great. Maria?
Sure. I'm happy to start. I provided an executive summary, so, you know, if those want to follow along. This report is meant to be an evaluative tool to assist the Board in accordance with the Town Charter. The Town posted an internal posting on August 18th in the consistent manner by which the Town posts internally to all Town employees to provide opportunity for all. The Town received four internal applications, letters of interest and resume. Per the Town Charter, a vacancy must be posted for 10 days, and it was, and the permanent appointment shall not be effective until 17 days following the date that the public notice was given. As the Town standard practice, the HR Department, the Director in this case, and the Police Chief, the recommending manager, reviewed the application screening criteria, considerations for meets the minimum in summary, where a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, law enforcement, or public administration, 10 years, 10 consecutive years of experience as a police officer, five of which must be progressively responsible and administrative So, all four candidates met the minimum, so we interviewed all four candidates, and let's see. So, Candidate Porter is being recommended based on five years of command and 14 years of supervisory experience, review development, implementation, and enforcement of department policies and procedures, as evidenced by the three years' work of the police state accreditation, his collaboration on the department's strategic plan and implementation, his oversight of the revised and improved field training program with a focus on customer excellence exemplifying leadership, assisting the Town's management team on collective bargaining matters, his extensive work in the past two years in particular with COVID, et cetera, on the Hopkinton Emergency Management Group, which also includes townwide and school events, supporting the Town during COVID. Candidate Porter also described some of his contributions towards diversity, beginning with the significant amount of information gathering and reading, utilizing materials on the Town's and Meyer, our insurance company, portals, shared his visions for the next step with regard to formal and informal outreach with residents and stakeholders. In addition, Candidate Porter has contribute toward police department's collaborative diversity work with a specific focus on recruitment and retention. Lastly, Candidate Porter is finalizing his training in a very competitive MMA Suffolk University program whereby which he'll earn graduate-level credits for those courses. And then the Executive Director of MMA describes this highly competitive local government leadership as a high-quality academic offering that links contemporary public management theory with real-world practice. The Town felt very fortunate to have four excellent internal candidates, and so the interview panel, which consisted of Assistant Town Manager Elaine Lazarus, Chief Bennett, and myself. The interview panel concluded that Candidate Porter was the top candidate based on his qualification and his demonstrated proven five years' command, experience, and high accomplishments. Respectfully submitted, Maria Casey.
Thank you, Maria. Chief Bennett?
Well, it's a fantastic night for HPD and for me. Choosing your second-in-command is one of the most important decisions that you can make when you are at the top. And since taking over as Chief, Lieutenant Porter has been a steadfast second-in-command, reliable, and consistent, and he's capable of much work. So, as everybody know, admit those that are at the top know, things come in like this to my desk and I turn and look for someone who I think can get it done thoroughly, and Lieutenant Porter is that person. So, I'm proud to be here for you tonight for your consideration for Lieutenant Porter as the next deputy chief of the Town of Hopkinton.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members?
I have nothing for these two. I have something for the next guy.
I think it kind of makes sense for the next guy to come on up, right?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Yes, certainly. So, Chief, if you could tell us a little bit about, I'm interested in your last comment, about how his skills, style, and experiences complement your own and the ways that will function within the department?
Thank you. That's a great question. So, Lieutenant Porter and I are very different people. We look at things differently, but we have been working cohesively as a team throughout our career, from when we worked midnights together up through the creation and development of the School Resource Officer, and then under Chief Lee's leadership. Chief Lee was fantastic at allowing us to, opportunities to take on new roles and responsibilities, and Lieutenant Porter and I took many on. So, his personality, his, the way he thinks and analyzes situations complements mine, and what I like about it because is, what I like about working with him is that he's not hesitant to respectfully say, "Well, what about this?" Or, "What could go wrong?" And I need that. A person in command needs that because not many people will walk up to the Chief and say, "I think you got it wrong." So, you need that person. You need that trust.
Thank you.
Thanks. Lieutenant Porter, would you care to join us? I think you are the man of the hour, right?
Those don't slide.
Thank you all for having me. Well, it's our pleasure to have you before us. Board members?
I'll go last.
Okay. Maria Jo?
Well, I've known him for a long time, and I've worked with him on various boards around town, and I think he's a fine choice for deputy chief. That's all I have to say.
So, I would like you to take the opportunity to tell the Town a little bit about what some of us already know about your career here and why you're interested in the role and what you hope to accomplish in this role.
Sure. I was fortunate enough to get hired at a very young age as a police officer. I was the youngest, one of the youngest in the state.
Oh, I think, right?
I was, I just turned 19 when I got hired in the town that I grew up in, and it was very difficult being 19 years old, growing up and now policing the town that you grew up in, learning secrets about friends, family, relatives that you really didn't need to know. So, I worked there for three years and it was a great three years of my career, but I realized it was time that I, in order for my own growth to become better, I needed to find a new place to go. And people laugh when they say, "Well, the next town over is Hopkinton," but when you grew up in Upton, it's a million miles away.
It's a big city.
It's a bit, yeah. It's, the only, the only attraction I ever had in Hopkinton was Officer Griffin pulling me over for inspection stickers.
Just block in.
Yeah. So, I didn't even know he was here, so, yeah. So, I'm proud to say the only two tickets I've ever got, Officer Griffin was the one that gave them to me.
Oh?
Yes.
I like it.
Yes. But, but the second one, I was given the choice of, as long as I came back by the end of his shift with my car inspected, it would, you'd take the ticket back, so...
Full disclosure, I had one of those when I was in military uniform too, and I think that helped me.
And then I remember, and then I remember coming back and Chief McRobert told me, "Are you for real? Give me the ticket and get out of my station." Thank you, sir. So, I came here in Hopkinton and it was, it was a breath of fresh air. We had a very young department with a mix of old and young, with Officer Griffin, Officer Powers. I had many great mentors that had come from Upton and that had come over here, so I had those connections. I had a difficult childhood. We grew up in a, an abusive father that was abusive to my mother, myself, and my sister, and another officer that retired here not too long ago took me under his wing when I was about 14 years old in Upton, Chuck Wallace. And, you know, he, he did the goofy things you did. He'd let me ride my bike and see how fast I'd go on the radar gun, and he just kept an eye out for me, made sure that, you know, even though statistically I could have gone one way, he made sure I didn't, and I came the other way. So, that allowed me to grow up and come through, and then to come here and then to be able to work with Officer Powers, who had been to my house many times when he was in Upton, and Chuck Wallace, the connection was just instantaneous. And then, of course, you had the Pat O'Briens and everything else that everybody knows about. So, I was allowed to grow up through the ranks here in town. Other aha moment here in Hopkinton, when I was bypassed for sergeant, and again, that was just simply because of my immaturity again and thinking that I was owed something that I really wasn't. I had to earn it. So, Tom Irvin at the time was the chief, and he recognized that I still had some growing and learning to do, and he allowed me to become the first School Resource Officer for the Town of Hopkinton. And that, although I love everything I do, that was probably the most enlightening, the most rewarding thing I ever did, making connection with the schools. Because the area was a police officer going into a school system where they didn't trust the police, the kids didn't trust the police, the teachers didn't trust the police, the administration had no idea what to do with us, and we worked towards ahead and developed a great bond, and I think that's probably why the School Resource Officer Program in Town is so good that it is today with Officer Powers up there and Matt Santoro right now, and soon to be Jay Diana is going to be another rock star for us up there. Then, after that, I was finally, I moved to Detective Bureau where, again, because it's Hopkinton for some reason, all of a sudden I was on an airplane going to England chasing after a murder suspect, murdered his wife and child in town. Again, something never expected to, the media attention, the way that we were chased around not only here, and when we left duty here, but when we got to England, the paparazzi and everybody just chasing us around everywhere we went, scrutinizing all of us. Again, it was another growing experience that I never would have got probably anywhere else. And then I was allowed to become sergeant, and then together we were made lieutenants. Another problem because I had been here longer than him, but...
Yikes!
But that's okay. We've always been...
Mildly competitive.
Yeah. So, everybody talks about having your life partner, which is my wife. We've been together for, since we were 15, and this is my other life partner here.
You know, we don't judge.
He keeps me, he keeps me in check and grounded here at work. She keeps me, keeps me checked at home and in every other day of life. So, the fact that he's chief and that I'm, again, going to be able to serve him and work with him is just tremendous. You know, I've been in this town, coming up on 30 years now. It's just, it's like a second family to me. It's grown, it's changed, and luckily I've been able to grow and change with it. I wouldn't be what I was if it wasn't for what Hopk, the Town of Hopkinton and the men and women of the department have given me and made me.
I would like to say two things. Thank you so much for generously sharing so much of your personal story. It's really meaningful, and it goes to the whole story. That was very, very generous of you and was very, it's wonderful to hear that Hopkinton has had such a wonderful impact for you personally as well as professionally. So, I want to say one thing I want to, and I know I've spoken to you personally, I have had some questions and some struggles with process, and I just want to say to you and to everybody that has nothing to do with you personally, you professionally, or anybody else personally and professionally. So, I hope that I make that clear when I speak about process, and I would personally and professionally like us to start moving towards a more open and competitive process throughout the Town, not just within particular departments. So, that would be my personal preference. The other question that I have for you, and I know that this was part of your interview process, is some of the work in particular that you and the department have done and have accomplished in pursuit of increasing your DEI goals, and also where you see maybe the next five years for the department in making progress, being more open, more diverse, more inclusive?
Sure. I think it's very important that we, we are very lucky. We're connected with our community as we saw when everything was going on with police reform, not just with our residents, but with the Board and other Town departments , all they all came together to sign a Town Pledge versus just a police pledge. But we always have to do better. We can't sit back and say, "We're the number one, we're the most safest community in Town and in the country." We have to go out and recruit. We have to, now, there are a large population of people that don't distrust the people and don't know us, and those are the people that we need to go out, connect with, and convince, and show them who we are, what we're about. We have, the Town itself has changed in diversity, and there's so many different communities within the community that come from places that they don't trust the police, and it's our job and it's our role to find people to go out and make connections with those community members, build a trust with them so that they do come to us and that they do want to be a part of us. I think we, one of the things that we talk about often is recruitment teams that are going to go to these different areas and sell ourselves even better than we do, go to minority colleges, go to minority areas, and convince these people to come to us. You know, the cities get a lot of diversity because I think they're comfortable working in a city that's diverse, and they're afraid sometimes to come out to a town, so that if we can go in and we can convince them and show them that we're all encompassing, that we're all willing to learn from them and bring them here and let them grow with us, and we learn from them and they learn from us, I think it'll make us a much more better department than we are. And I understand, like, we had the conversation about, your comments about looking elsewhere or expanding the search, and I didn't take it personally.
Appreciate that.
Because I challenge you to find people better than the ones that we have here in Town and within our department. So, if you can find someone better than what we already have down there in the House, then I'll be it. Well, I'll lead and I'll follow them, but, I mean, our job is, we always talk about building...
Where am I going?
Well, you're getting old. I'm younger than you two, so...
You are younger.
But...
So, I do appreciate that, and I hope I made that point too. I agree with you. I would always expect and hope that we've developed our own people so that they would be ultimately very hard to beat in the search. So, I really, I really appreciate that. I look forward to really constructive work over the next couple of years to learn what we need to learn, right? I don't, I don't know what I need to learn about this either, to learn what we need to learn and find pathways to make sure that we are expanding our internal resources and developing, making sure that our departments are prepared too, to develop people that didn't come up the same way that you and I came up. So, I appreciate that a lot, very much.
Well, you've offered quite a bit just now, and you've covered an awful lot of ground. I really don't have much to ask you, but I do want to say that, you know, what Chief Bennett was saying is that you're willing to challenge him and work as a team. I think that's critical because none of us have all the answers, and I think if we're open to that criticism and the collaborative interaction, I think that's, that's a fantastic result, the best result that we can get with what we have, right? So, it means an awful lot to hear Chief Bennett say that he appreciates what you do, and that's enough for me.
I also want to add that my first interaction with you was when my daughter was appealing her...
I had no idea. I didn't know what to tell you, but...
Magistrate asked, "Do you think she learned her lesson?" You said, "No, I don't think so."
Oh, see, now, when my son went Ricky Flannery, I didn't speak for him. I didn't argue for him, and Ricky Flannery said, "Somebody better speak for this boy because he's a very, a fine young man."
Well, I let her do the speaking, but, hey, you know, actually, you did the right thing, right?
Learning, learning.
All right.
All right. Lieutenant.
Here we go.
So, after your three-year stint on the JV squad over in Upton, you spent 27 years up in the varsity, and I've known you for all 27 years of it. We've, we've had discussions, we've played softball together all around the country. I feel like I've known you pretty well, get a pretty good idea of who you are over the last 27 years, and I'm a pretty good judge of character. Professionally, one of the things that I have said since day one of us sitting up here is I understand people, I understand staffing, and I understand management, but I don't understand what it's like to be a police officer. I play selectman four hours a night, twice a month. This is your life, and you've done it for 30 years. My education as far as what it's like to be a cop, I watched a lot of chips as a kid, which, and then I worked in the prisons, and I worked in a maximum-security prison for more than a few years. The job that you guys do collectively as the department, it puts me in awe. I have a brother who's a sergeant in a town nearby. The job that you guys do is unbelievable. What I got to see when I spent some time at the police station for that Michaela Rally, I got to see how the Hopkinton Police interacted with the state police, interacted with the local SWAT teams, interacted with everybody seamlessly. It was one of the most eye-opening experiences I've ever had as a civilian dealing with the, with the police department. It was awesome. It was awesome, and I don't use that awesome, that word often. And the fact that you pretty much ran the show. You were telling the state police to do this and this, and Chief Bennett would ask you, "What are we doing here and who's doing this?" And it was seamless, and you just, you took control. I brought Chief Bennett into his office after that, on my way out, and I thanked him for allowing me to be there, but I also said how overly impressed I was with how you conducted yourself and how you managed that department, that entire incident seamlessly, and it really was inspiring. You mentioned as a, as a child that you had Chuck Wallace as a mentor for you. You mentioned as a, as a child that you had Chuck Wallace as a mentor for you personally. So as a child for me, Chuck Wallace was a new cop in town. And I also had a father that wasn't an all-star. And it was people like Chuck Wallace, people like Griffin, sorry, Officer Griffin, that, that really had an impact on me as a child and as a youth and as an adolescent, knowing that we didn't want to get caught by those guys. Not because our, we could talk our way out of it with our parents, but we didn't want to disappoint them. And that admiration has carried over at, I mean, at age 52. And I still look up to those guys very much, and Pat O'Brien, all the guys back then. And it's nice to see some of the newer guys, Labor and Sank and, and those guys out there that are, that are making a difference in, with the population of the school kids now. My kids know a lot of them. They know the dog, they know the, the officers, and, and they know, and it's not because I'm a selectman. It's because you guys have a great presence in the town. All the, the adverse stuff that's gone on in your industry, the fact that anyone that wears a badge, that can do your job the way you do it, as professionally as you do with people just throwing garbage at you left and right, left and right. No, you can't, you know, if you walked on water, 70% of the people around here would say it's because you can't swim. And it's, it bothers me to the core because I know that you guys aren't in it to write tickets, and you guys aren't in it to tase people, and you're not in it to shoot people. You're in it to make a difference for the public. And it kills me when, when you see other people take the opposite side and question your motives and your morals and why you do it. I can't speak for the entire country. Every industry has a couple of bad apples. But in Hopkin, we've not had a bad apple. And I appreciate all the work that Chief Bennett, Lieutenant, all the guys out there that have done it since I was a kid here. And I'm not going to get on a pulpit. I will say I did also have one ticket written to me in town. No, that will be addressed in January 28th, 2022, when your school resource officer retires. At that point, that was the only one that was written. But Chief Bennett, you are putting your spin on the department now. This is your department. This is your first step in making this department yours. I, oh, and I'm sorry, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Tom Irvin too. Tom Irvin is another guy that, and Chief Flannery and Chief McRoberts and all these guys that have been your predecessors, you see their management style. Some are good, some are bad. You learn from them. And you take the best out of that and you grow from it. And we, Chief Miller and I had a, a long conversation about the same thing, where you take, you take what's in it to you and try to make it even better. So if, if, if Chief Bennett thinks that you're the number one guy there, I back him 100%. Like I said, it was a very, very eye-opening experience for me to sit there with, see how you guys worked in that Michaela rally. It was awesome. I wish that the public could, some of the naysayers that, that question your motives, I wish they could see something like that and, and just really get to the heads of, of the job that all you guys do. So I don't have anything else, but, you know, congratulations. It's nice to see you here. And again, I'm glad that you got promoted from the JV 27 years ago. It took you a while to get here, but you're the quarterback now.
Well, with that, I request a motion to appoint John Porter as deputy police chief for the town of Hopkin.
So moved.
Senator.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, is there, is there like a pending thing that goes on?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
So we'll see you next meeting.
Yes, sir.
That's all make funny at the next meeting. Today was serious, Brendan. Next meeting.
Congratulations, Deputy. Thank you.
Take care, best of luck.
Thank you all.
Okay. So we're going to go back to the marathon committee. Select Board will receive an update from the chair of the marathon committee as I described earlier. Dottie?
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
So now Chuck, you're going to be in the other wall.
Yes.
How are you, Dottie?
Very good, very good. Busy, busy week.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's got to be busy this half week.
But we had our sign put up this morning, so it all starts now.
Yep.
Goes back 42 ye, 42 years ago that that sign was created. And Jack Laduke touched it up and the DPW, who we depend on for everything, Mike Manzer and his crew stationed it for us this morning. And off we go for the week.
Well, we, we want to celebrate the tireless work of this committee under the excellent leadership of yourself. We like to call you Dottie. The committee does so much for the community and running, and the running world by helping facilitate this world-class premier event. No words can capture the countless hours that your team puts into the event before, during, and after the event. Suffice to say, the marathon committee has been putting up a great, warm welcoming show for the past, for the start of the race for the past 24 year, 42 years. Take it away. How are we doing?
We're a great team. It's comprised of, a lot of departments are represented on our team, from police, fire, DPW, border health, and the school building director of the building grounds of the schools. And everybody amongst all the at-large members that really give a lot of their volunteer time. And they handle anything from the professional athletes over at the Korean Church or the information booth or, but we don't have the athletes village this year, but now they've been deployed to other areas to help because of the rolling start. That actually is different this year in that you're not going to have the four-gun start, you're going to have the one gun. And we're very proud to have our local fire chief, Bill Miller, represent all first responders. And he'll be firing the gun for that. But we'll, we'll hopefully in, you know, in April go back to what, you know, the four starts and some of the other traditions of the marathon. But there's a lot of things that go on through the year, and we count on one another and we put, it, it's a close committee. It's, it's, it's pretty, we depend on one another, which is, you know, like, somebody can rely on the next person to fill in if that person isn't, you know, at the meeting or something like that. I mean, everybody's worked hard. Up at, you know, at the center school, we'll have the wheelchairs, and Alex Daney takes a big role in that area as well. You have, you're going to have the runners coming in on buses. They're going to be coming in and the bibs will be color-coded by their, you know, their qualification. And they'll be bussed in to Grove and Pleasant, and they'll be deploying from the buses and go, make their way up to CVS, grab a, a bottle of water or use the Porta-John, and then head to the start. And that's all going to be timed by people coming in. So there's not a whole lot of runners at one time. So it's something new, and it's really came about because of the whole trying to be with all the mitigations of COVID-19 and the different world we're living in right now. I think the BAA did the best and they've put together a great plan, so. And we've been honored to work with the BAA and all the town departments, the town manager's office, all of you. Some of the businesses in town, like Hopkin Shell, CVS, the Korean Church, I see they're sprucing up, they're painting their building, the church looks awesome. And now to see the streets, we have to thank Dave Del Torrio and Michelle for all that happening so quickly and, and the striping of the, of the lines. Everything looks really pristine. And that's what our job is. We, we are, one of our big goals is we want to make sure this, this town shines. You've got the national stage and the international stage, and we want to make sure everybody is on key and we pull off a fantastic and successful start with the BAA at the lead. So we're happy to be involved in, it's been a long while that I've been on, involved. And it's people I see, a couple of the members here, Craig Gormley is the vice chair and also serves for the, he handles, manages the information booth. Judy Petasi, she handles all the donated clothing, all the clothing that's just taken off as they, they'll come in layered and then they'll, you know, take things off as they get to the start. And she has put together a great plan with Big Brother, Big Sister with the BAA and does a fabulous job. They get thousands of tons of, you know, thousands of pounds of clothing that's donated and to the benefit of Big Brother, Big Sister. So that's a great thing. And Chuck Wallace, you all know him, he's done a few things over the years, and he helps with the public safety up at the startage platform in the VIP area the last few years. But it's just been a great, a great team, you know? I mean, I feel I can call anybody and, and get a response and a positive thing. And when somebody says, hey, can we do this? Of course, you know? So, and, and the community at large has been fantastic. I mean, you know, we've got a great, great community here that really, you know, with some of the changes we had to make this year and, and past years due to different things going on that have happened over the years, the community has always been fantastic. And that's, you know, I'd love to thank the residents and all the businesses in town for their cooperation because it's a big, that's a big effort. And that makes all the difference in, you know, this weekend you'll be seeing like barricades being put up, you know? The Stockport enable will be in, you know, making sure that's all up, you know? They'll be setting, you know, a couple of tents on the common, you know? But everybody just works together, and I think that's significant for the townspeople. And, you know, when I call different offices, it's not often I don't get called back or, you know, support. So that's one thing that I appreciate, especially from this board and the town manager's office as always. And, you know, I'm proud to lead such a fantastic group and, you know, they do a great job. And we're looking to, forward to it. You know, this is the first in-person, you know, for the BAA since the whole pandemic. And, you know, they're also going to have a virtual, you know, that anybody can do from Friday to Monday as well. So, you know, they really, there'll be no athletes village, but, you know, and you get the smaller field size, but runners are, you know, will be bussed, you know, in safely and within timing and everything. And some of the things, you know, we'll have, the grand marshals will be coming out and they'll be announced over the weekend, but also riding, there'll be two duck boats at the start. And also riding in those is the 1968 champion, Ambie Burford. He was, he'll start the men's and women's wheelchair. And Russell Hoyt, the son of Dick Hoyt, will start the hand circles and the duos. And Christina Welton, who's the granddaughter of George Brown, the infamous, infamous Brown family, will start the Para athletes. And then our famous chair of the board, select board, will be making remarks at 8:10 that morning and followed by the rolling start that will have our fire chief, Bill Miller, at the helm to signal that. And, you know, I think we've, you know, I can't thank all the volunteers. I believe there's probably, you know, 400 to 450 coming into town and, you know, they do a great job. It's not just a one group. I mean, in the BAA, the, the starting captains led by the operations director and also the race director and the start coordinator, that's Lauren Prochan, Dave McGilvery, and Andy DeShane, rely heavily on them, on the BAA leading the way. And I think we're going to have a great day on Monday. And did you check the weather by chance today?
Right here. I just jotted it down. I was just going to say it was ironic that this is, you know, the latest and it's, and the, the most up-to-date forecast is six to eight inches of snow.
Oh, okay. We've seen that, we've seen that. We've seen that. Remember when the hay bills had to be placed everywhere and everything? We've seen it all. And I would certainly welcome some calmer weather this year because we've seen the rain and the wind and everything. And, but you know what the amazing thing? And it's a testament to the BAA, it's a testament to this town and to the volunteers from everywhere coming into this town, is they still come out and show up and do the job and go home proud that they had a part in the greatest marathon in the world.
You know, I can't tell you how excited I am, and I think everybody in town is to have it back, you know? Taking a year off was painful, and it's just, it's super exciting that it's all going down again. You know, I think one of the characteristics of a great leader is when they pass off all the congratulations to the team. And that's what we're hearing from you. That is, it requires great leadership and you've really, you've really led well.
Thank you.
And I'm so happy to see this thing back. Excited to, to be there and, and see it all go down again and do it again in May.
And then in six months, we'll have to, once it goes, we'll have to get right back on it and on the deal. We'll be planning for April and so, but we're very happy and we were so happy, I mean, we were devastated when it was announced that it was canceled and then when it was announced that we could do it. When the BAA announced that, we were all ecstatic, so. Because a lot of effort goes into the planning and the logistics and things, so.
Even more so this year.
Yes, yes.
Even more so. But, but you pulled it off and congratulations. Board members?
Yeah, you sold my thunder. I, I, I am, how many years have you done this?
I've been a volunteer for the marathon. This will be my, it's been 36 years. Once I complete this, it will be 37.
We make it through Tuesday.
And I think it's been 22, 21 or 22 years as chair of the committee, so.
That's an unbelievable accomplishment, not just for the town, but for the whole state and for runners everywhere. We're so lucky to have you. And what Erfan just pointed out is exactly what I was thinking. It's, it's the mark of really tremendous collaborative, wonderful, vibrant leadership when you spent all the time you just spent sharing the accolades with all of the members on your team. And that's why, that's a big part of why they work together so well and, and things are run so smoothly here. You get a lot of credit for that.
Thank you.
It's a really wonderful way to invest your talents and, and develop and build a team, and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, you got me. I've spent 35 years volunteering for the marathon and voted for Dottie the first year she became chairman with Rosemary Lynch. Tells you how long ago that was. And I have loved every minute of being on that committee. It's so well-run. And everybody has their job, they know their job, they do their job. Every once in a while we have a new member and in and out, but it runs like clockwork. It's just a fabulous, fabulous committee. And a little credit to Dorothy for, for running the show and, and keeping everybody in line. And while, while we're sitting here for a minute, I just want to ask Judy, because I remember when she started the clothing drive, how many years have you been doing it now?
15.
I remember too, because I was there, I was on the board when that first came in, and I was so ecstatic and so excited that all of those clothes were getting organized and going to good use. It's an amazing.
Well, there's a story about how that started.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, there is. Want to tell it?
Sure.
So I was about, I've been a volunteer for 32 years with the marathon. This will be my 32nd. And I was doing the water at the beginning and at, after the race was over and the trucks, trash trucks came and they took all the clothes in the trash. And I went up and not very quietly started yelling at her, what are they doing? Why are they throwing all these clothes away? What's going on? And she said that the charity didn't come or the trucks didn't come. And I remember being really upset about it. And then a couple of months later, she called me up and she said, so, do you still have the passion for the clothing? So I sought out charities and it was very difficult to get one that could commit the trucks. That was the big issue. We've gotten as little as 8,000 pounds and we've gotten as much as 52,000 pounds in a collection. gotten as much as fifty two thousand pounds in a collection we average a pound and a half right now per person so at twenty thousand pounds we're probably looking at seven to eight trucks right now with one always at bay so if we need it it'll be a real challenge this year because there's been so many changes including cutting my team in half so that's gonna be tough but as everybody's supposedly gonna chip in and we're all gonna get it done so I'm proud to be I'm proud to be the person who figured it out and I'm also a cartoon on GBH so.
One question what's the most tonnage?
Fifty two thousand the year fifty two thousand pounds the year after the bombing because they did away with the clothing trucks and not everybody got the memo so and it was pretty horrendous but we got it done it was we we got the the streets opened I'm proud to say the streets have never not opened on time because of trash or clothing but after that I walked back to the school and it looked like a clothing Holocaust that was everywhere. I cried because I went oh my what are we gonna do but we figured it out so.
Well you get a lot of a lot of credit total props because those clothes go and get reused and repurposed in very important ways.
So what happens is they get sent to thrift stores all over the country and all the money goes back to big brother big sister to pay for mentoring programs to match a big brother and a big sister.
That is amazing.
It comes back to the community.
That's awesome.
So when we were kids we would go down to Frank Kaminsky's house and at age five probably and we it was like Halloween for us so you got they they would run by and we would be grabbing sweatpants and sweatshirts and then we would go to either Mr. Wilson's house over off the common or go to the common or and all of our friends would be I'll give you this sweatpants you give me this hat and it was like you know the midway point to Halloween practicing our bartering skills and that ended when I grew out of any runner size clothes which was about age eleven. We had a lot of fun doing it with great memories but it's awesome to see you guys what you do with with those clothes and Dottie you know to do what you do as long as you have I'm sure some of it runs itself but it runs itself because of the processes that you guys have put into place you've done an awesome job.
Thank you.
The fact that there's not a lot of you know fighting within the board and that hits the public the fact that you guys are the marathon committee for such a massive event and you're quiet we don't hear you all all year long you don't come to us and ask us for this and come to us for this and people are resigning and you gotta do this you just run you run a tight ship and you should be very proud of it's it's great to see you give the accolades to your team but at some point you take take a few for yourself you've done an awesome job and we're very lucky to have you here.
I have a background I used to run trade shows and international trade shows about and conferences so you always had things blips in the road that you had to think on your feet and be the master magician to figure a major thing out so it was a good experience.
Well you should be very proud of the work that you do we're all proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
If I may Dottie thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And for explaining to the community the wonderful work that you do in preparation for the marathon as well as at the start of the actual marathon there's one piece that I need to share with the public several board members spoke to your leadership qualities there's one thing that you do and you do very well in that regard namely as a leader you take the time to say thank you to your team members one of the most heartwarming feel-good events in this community is the wonderful party that you put together.
Yes.
To celebrate the work of the volunteers thank you for doing that as a leader.
Yes, thank you we try to do that I I know that's all it's actually the committee that puts that on and we try we have a nominal fee you know but it's paid for within our group but and then we have some people that help us out in like alcohol or something like that they may donate but other than that but why I started that is because you can't thank everybody that day and it seems like you come into town that day and boom the marathon's over and everybody's back you know at their homes and saying hey.
It used to be we were back at the tap.
Yes, tap or Pat O'Brien's house or you know but it was a way to say thank you and recognize different people but also just to relax in an environment that you know everybody just you've been there a few times and it's so comfortable everybody's laid back you know it's a nice we have it over at Labor's Training Center and Teddy Bruski loved it so much he's come three times so you know even Heidi so but no it's just and I I like that party it's just really you know it's just a way to say thank you to everybody and you know and relax and enjoy and share stories on some of the things as well so.
It's a great time and one of the really fun things about it is that as people come in everybody is really happy to see everybody else and say hi and and mix around and and it just it's it's a really good atmosphere and a great time.
Yeah it's been a a nice event every year and especially this this year it's it's really meaningful to a lot of people that have waited especially runners that are raising money for charities and everything that's one of the benefits that the town really reaps the rewards of is all the charities that are affected and the money that's raised every year and I know a lot of people were looking forward to last year and then when it was canceled but you do what you have to do at the time and I think the BAA did the right course and you know they should be commended for what they did and you know now we're here and come Monday be a great day and we hope to see everybody there.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So through the chair later tonight the select board members will attend an unveiling of the Bobby Gibb statue which will be located at the corner of Hayden Rowland Main I propose that in recognition of outstanding leadership and achievement as the first woman to run the Boston Marathon the town of Hopkinton does gratefully present an award of honorary citizenship to Roberta Louise Bobby Gibb so I will I'll move to present an award of honorary citizenship to Roberta Louise Bobby Gibb in recognition of outstanding leadership and achievement as the first woman to run the Boston Marathon.
That's awesome, that's great that's where I'm gonna head.
We want to make sure that you guys were sitting there while we read that.
Yes, that's great.
Thank you.
I raised a lot of money for that so.
So we have a motion and it's been seconded any discussion hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed it's unanimous?
Thank you very much and keep the weather on a good path yes.
I'm doing my best I keep fighting with those gods but.
I'll keep emailing you check in thank you very much.
Sometime when there's no cameras and other people here I have a wonderful story to tell you about while the marathon was being canceled and a discussion I had with Mayor Walsh Marty Walsh I'll call him Marty Walsh.
Yeah.
Not my mayor but it's a story that you and I and Chuck would laugh.
Oh I'd love to hear about it.
It's a good one.
I'd love to hear about that that'd be awesome well thank you.
Thank you Dottie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chuck.
As it were young fellow.
That was cool.
Before before I leave I just wanted to give my congratulations and sincere thanks to George Robinson who retired this week and he has been driving the senior bus for a good number of years for us and everybody up there loves him and I think that we just wanna congratulate him and thank him for his service.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Awesome guy, awesome guy it's sad it's sad to see him leave but retirement well deserved he put a very nice post on Facebook today saying saying how you know as much appreciation as people give him he gets back in spades by helping out the seniors.
Just for the public's knowledge Mary Jo's on her way over to the unveiling of the statue so we're gonna continue as just the three of us as a quorum.
She's starting the race now virtually so she's gonna be the first person across the country.
All right the next agenda item is the board and committee appointments board will consider appointing John Morris to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty four.
Mr. Chair I move to appoint John Morris to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty four.
Second.
I only do that because I see he's not here.
Is it virtual?
No, okay so we have motions been seconded any discussion hearing none?
No I'm very happy that he has jumped on though we need some new energy there so appreciate it.
Yep all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed it's unanimous Shared Housing Services Office the board will consider an opportunity to participate in the regional shared housing services office with area communities as the lead community and hear from John Gelsic the principal planner regarding this opportunity. Gelsic.
Good evening board members.
Good evening.
I have a presentation Ben if you could put it up there I'll make this quick because I know you have something.
I appreciate that Mr. Gelsic Red Sox minus ninety minutes.
All right so looks like there's an error message in the middle.
Yep.
All right we'll get that fixed so Shared Housing Services Office this is something that Hopkinton is evaluating with MAPC for those of you who don't know MAPC is a regional planning agency that we are a member of so Ben could you go to the next slide please? So SHSOs are essentially consulting firms that are contracted by a group of towns to do affordable housing type work very specialized very expertise driven and that's what we're looking at here next slide please so an SHSO in this context would be focused on monitoring affordable housing units currently existing in town there's a lot of stuff that goes on with the monitoring there's compliance sales rerentals that type of thing that all need to be overseen and so an organization like an SHSO can do that with the expertise that they have because it's very complex and complicated of a process next slide please. Some other responsibilities our administration of affordable housing programs like the home program project management if it were to come up with that one of the main points that I think we're looking for is project specific support where units that have an affordable housing restriction that expires we're looking to somehow extend that to in perpetuity or longer if it's not in perpetuity so some of these units that we have are actually expiring in the twenty thirties so we only have like ten years to do this which seems like a lot of time but it does not turn into a lot of time so and then other ones that are expiring twenty forty and so forth and so on so if we can get the affordable restrictions on those deeds extended to in perpetuity then we don't have to worry about them falling off the SHI reducing our threshold to ten percent number and worrying about forty Bs in the future and then also thank you Ben there's also lotteries that go along with that and those are complex complicated process that expertise is really beneficial for so how the SHO will work there's an intermunicipal agreement that MAPC is currently working on they've drafted something we're gonna review it and bring it to town council to review and that kind of sets out the process for the SHSO administration how the membership fees work how the lead community works and that type of stuff Hopkinton has been identified as the best candidate for the lead community for this effort and I think it reflects on our willingness to really promote affordable housing in our community and just our efforts up to this point we also in another slide coming up you'll see we actually are also requesting a lot of the services in a percentage base because we have some of the most affordable housing units out of all the towns next slide so as lead community it's really working with the provider this is gonna be a consultant or another firm so we're working with them on behalf of the consortium we are we need to establish a revolving fund to intake fees and then pay the invoices we need to basically do the RFP process in in conjunction with MAPC they're gonna help us out with that and then just general coordination with member communities and the provider next slide so this is a list of the towns that are working with us that are probably gonna be part of the SHSO just give me a minute to look at those all right and so yep yep you can go yep thank you so these are the services that we are requesting as part of the SHSO service listing so a lot of it is coming from the monitoring and so since we have a significant amount of affordable housing units there's a time associated with each unit and the monitoring that takes place for that year there's also some hours dedicated to local support some of the towns wanted resident support and project consultation we don't necessarily need that right now we'd have residents we prefer residents to go through us to then go to the SHSO rather than have them directly contact the SHSO which is an option one of the good things is that this can change year after year the services we use can change and we can pay a little bit more to get certain services so if we have a project that we want them to help us on we can do that that there's an allowable change for that next slide please and so the budget for the SHSO in general Hopkinton you can see is the second highest midfield is the highest and they were looking for a little bit more of assistance in not just administration but project support we were looking for more in the maintenance of the existing affordable units next slide so these are the existing SHSOs in Massachusetts there's three of them we spoke with Marcia Rasmussen who's the town planner in Concord who is lead community for the oldest SHSO she gave us some input on what the responsibilities of the host community are it was helpful and I'm gonna reach out to Hudson to talk to them about their their process and their experience and probably reading at some point as well next slide so for all the municipalities there's certain next steps that need to be taken they need to reach a consensus consensus on the intermunicipal agreement they need to get buy-in from their select boards they need to figure out the funding source that they're looking for and I'll just note we're looking to go through CPC so I am preparing an application for a twenty five thousand dollar request for the membership fees right now that eighteen thousand that we showed on a previous slide is just an estimate so we want to make sure that we're requesting enough to pay for those fees and we're covering everything and then anything else that a town needs to set up the intermunicipal agreement and the SHSO on their part next slide so specifically for Hopkinton as a lead municipality we need to sign off from town leadership we need to review the RFP once it's drafted the warrant article for the revolving fund needs to be submitted for town meeting and then approved we need to finalize the contract once it's drafted and then we need to establish that revolving fund and get it all up and running and that is an overview of the SHSO if you have any questions.
Board members?
So I don't know if if this is a question that you can answer or not we had a person or we have a person in town that was in need of housing and he's someone that was a generational resident of town diagnosed with ALS and we were trying to get him in and with Spilka and Carolyn Dykema we were trying to get him into our housing for the elderly down on Davis Road it was disheartening at the least to see that we can't give preference on these lotteries on these housing to Hopkinton residents I don't know if if there's anything that you can do and Mr. Kamal if I'm off base just let me know if I'm off base but it it angers me that we can't give preference to people that have lived in Hopkinton for those available housing on this new SHSO is there a way to make it so we can wait it so Hopkinton residents even if we set a minimum amount of years that they've they don't need to be townies but they if they spent fifteen years here twenty years here it makes me sad to see that that this person who's who has given back to Hopkinton times a hundred is now living at one of his high school friend's house locally because he couldn't find the only place that they could find housing for him was out in Springfield it's it's borderline sickening and it has nothing to do with you or anything that you've done in the past but I'm just moving forward if we can add in that there's that we're allowed to to wait it so Hopkinton residents get first priority over some of this housing I don't know if it's if it's anything that we can legally do or not but it's just something that makes me very sad to see.
So through the chair yeah Mr. Teston you you raise a very important issue it's somewhat separate from the discussion tonight however in fact Peps has a pledge to my request I'm going to request the board to formally vote to support this initiative with the understanding. understanding that there are the subsequent steps outlined by John that we need to take. It is important that we continue to affirm the town's commitment to affordable housing. The SHO gives us the tools necessary to continue in educating, preserving the affordable housing that we have. There's a way we can get to some answer to your question, which may be separate from the work of the SHO, namely, other communities that I've worked for actually create their own affordable housing with clear guidelines as to how we will integrate individuals from the community or from outside the community who have specific needs. So, in a roundabout way, I'm asking that the Board formally endorse this initiative for the reason that, one, it keeps our focus on affordable housing active. Number two, is Hopkinton exercising leadership on regionalization regarding or in relation to affordable housing. And then, thirdly, it also gives the town access to resources that normally would not benefit from as an individual town. Being part of this regional network will qualify us for some grants that we will pursue vigorously. So against that break, and I'm formally asking that the Board endorse this initiative. And in answer to Mr. Teston's question, separate issue, but something that we believe through these discussions, we'll be able to better educate the community in terms of the need that exists in this community. I will tell you, I'm sorry to take up your time. We had our emergency management group meeting last Wednesday. And at that meeting, I did learn that there are twelve families in Hopkinton that are homeless.
How many?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yes, that we had come into contact with. And alongside that, I intended to send an email to the Board. Last week was also a very interesting and exciting moment here at Town Hall, where we were concluding the first phase of the CPC-funded Rent and Mortgage Support Program spearheaded by Elaine. Why that moment was very, very eye-opening for me was that for the first time, I saw different faces coming into Town Hall. I heard different voices talking to Elaine, her voices that normally you would not see here at Town Hall. And that was a very refreshing experience for me.
I have a couple of questions. I'm really excited about this for a lot of reasons. And I appreciate this opportunity. I'm wondering, is it possible for the money that we have in the Affordable Housing Trust to be used for this? Okay, so that's one question I had.
Yep.
I see, actually, folks at home, Mr. Kamalo is nodding. He is nodding yes at that so. Have we asked the affordable, the folks on the Affordable Task Force for, you know, do they know about this? Are they involved in the conversation just to make sure that they understand what we're hoping to do and get there by? And I know they haven't been very active meetings, so I don't know if that's.
The Affordable Housing Trust?
Yeah.
I have not contacted them. I understand there's, I don't even think a quorum of a board, so.
I don't know.
As of tonight, there is.
Okay.
As of tonight, there is a quorum of a board.
So it's definitely something that we can work with them on and they can be involved in the process.
I think that that would be, that would be really wonderful. In my time, over time, and especially my time on the planning board, I just learned a lot about how complex affordable housing and the management of affordable housing is and the kind of impact that it can have on a, on a community in a positive way. So I take this as a very, very welcome sign because there are so many moving pieces. There's so much complexity to affordable housing. And which, by the way, is also different from state subsidized housing, which I think Mr. Teston was referring to. But the whole issue is really, is really important to focus on and really complex. One of the things that Hopkinton has always wanted to do and we have not successfully done is use some of that money that's coming to us to develop more units and also encourage developers to actually develop units versus giving us money. And this process might lay some groundwork of learning that we'd be more able to do those things efficiently. So I'm excited to see what that, where that might go and the possibilities there. The only other question I have, I thought typically affordable housing deed restrictions were in perpetuity. Is it unusual that we have some that are not, or?
So as far as I know, affordable housing units have to be deed restricted for at least thirty years. Most towns choose for them to be in perpetuity so they don't have to worry about it. But sometimes, and more, more commonly now they're in perpetuity, but in the past, they weren't always in perpetuity. Some of them were like a hundred years, so some of our units are expiring in 2104. But some of them are expiring soon. And they're homeownership units, so there's a potential for them to be lost. And so we wanna work early to get those remedied if we can.
No, I'm really glad to hear that. I'm surprised and glad that we are working on that issue early.
In fact, if I may, through the chair, this is a very good point regarding this initiative. The fact that we're going to start working on preserving our subsidized housing inventory ten years before the scheduled expiration of the restriction is great. I was part of the process in Wesley, where the town fought in court under the Admo case to preserve, I'm trying to remember the number of units, but there were just a few units. But it became a very long, expensive process. Yes, I'm really excited that we're doing this ten years before.
And we always love to be in the, in the mix and being in the lead. So that's actually a fun opportunity, I would think, for you in particular. So I hope that that is professionally.
I think it will be.
So I have, I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I just have two questions, one from Mr. Kamalo. So there's several other steps in this process and we're missing two board members here that I think would be nice to have them along. So there are other steps for them to be able to participate as we go forward in this?
Yes, there will definitely be many, many opportunities. However, I think, given the fact that the town desires to play a leadership role in this case, and that we plan to be applying for grants, it's always helpful when we can waive a resolution by the Board supporting the initiative.
Sure, sure. And then the second question is, it seems like the towns are scattered all over Massachusetts, well, at least eastern Mass. Kind of expected a more regional approach where, you know, the middle towns, Middlesex County. Why is it kinda scattered around like that?
So the towns that are participating in this SHSO are from two subcommittees within MAPC. So the Southwest Advisory Planning Consortium, yeah, Swap is what we are part of. So that's some of the towns. Wrentham, Bellingham, trying to think some of the other ones that are in that.
Randolph?
Medfield. No, Randolph is not. So then there's another subcommittee called TRIC, the Tri-Rivers Something Council.
Okay.
And so that's where like Randolph and some of the other ones. So it's those two alone, we probably couldn't get enough towns to do it just as a swap community, so they kinda grouped the two together. So that's why it's kind of a little spread out.
Makes sense. And is there any kind of logic for having such spread out towns, other than just how it was composed? But I mean, is there like a, okay.
No. Yeah, if we could, yeah, if we could have, if we could have, you know, more clustered, I don't know if there would be a benefit to that, because the firm or the person who would get hired out would really have their own space and they would mostly do email, phone calls, that type of thing. They would have to travel to town sometimes, but having them right next to each other doesn't necessarily benefit, because each town is responsible for its own affordable housing.
Sure. Well, I think Zoom kinda taught us we don't need to drive around everywhere. All right, awesome. So I'm gonna request a motion to support the Shared Housing Services Office.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Town manager report?
Mr. Kamalo?
Yeah, I think the highlight under the Main Street College of Project update is the state of the road, as we all saw from three days ago. Thanks again to Dave Del Torres' office efforts. Main Street has been repaved, starting from Pleasant Street all the way to Astor. So that the community also knows, right after the marathon, we'll go back and dig up the western part of, of Main Street, starting from the intersection going to Pleasant Street. However, the.
Intersection of West Main and Wood or the intersection here?
From here.
Okay.
To Pleasant. And then from the Main Street intersection, from the main Cedar Cross Street intersection to Astor will remain in place for a while.
Okay, awesome. It looks fantastic. I mean, it's, I.
For the next five days.
For the next five days. I'm just gonna keep driving back and forth.
There you go.
Just enjoy it.
Unfortunately, it's taken all the air out of the people that are against it. So all their hot-winded complaints about the, about the state of the roads has now turned to politics. So I can't wait for them to start digging it up so they can get back on complaining about this.
Excellent. Any liaison reports?
I do not have any liaison reports. I'm going to attend a couple of meetings coming up. And I wanted to ask about the Budget Advisory Committee, because I know that I'm on that. And I just wanna make sure that.
Oh, we've scheduled those meetings. We sent the invite to Ifan. Sorry, we will redirect the invite then to you.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right. Any future agenda items?
I would like, for a future agenda, I would like the Red Sox to win tonight and I would like Bucky Dent to twist his ankle on his way out of the stadium today. Yankees are bringing Bucky Dent in. Nothing but bad things for him and the Yankees and all the Yankee fans. Speaking as a citizen, not as a select.
We are Massachusetts residents. We're allowed to be pro Sox.
I just wanted to say that it must be clear to people that Amy is not with us these last couple of meetings. And she is doing well and will be back soon, hopefully. So I know people are probably noticing her absence and we are, and she said that she got flowers from Town Hall. Thank you very much. That was very nice. And she is doing well and home.
Awesome. So we bookended our meeting with Amy reports. All right. Mr. Teston, I know it's your favorite motion.
It is my favorite motion. Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay.
An abstention still carries, right? On a two to, still a.
Although, an abstention is a no, I'm a little surprised.
We can't put this at risk.
Then I'll say yes.
All right. It's unanimous. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.